All meeting order, please rise. Can we have a moment of silence to keep our troops in our prayers that they come home Thank you. Dennis, the pledge?
Good evening to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-10 has been complied with and shall be entered into the minutes of this meeting.
Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Here.
Freeholder Bellante.
Here.
Freeholder Kenny. Freeholder Polos. Freeholder Tamaro.
Here.
Freeholder Valenti. Freeholder Director Rios.
Here. Do you have some recognitions?
Yes, recognizing 2016 environmental essay and coloring contest winners and recognizing Lieutenant Helene Catani as she is named the 2016 Grand Marshal of the Olbridge Memorial Day Parade.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Tamaro, second by Freeholder Armwood. Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Yes.
Freeholder Bellante.
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny. Freeholder Tamaro.
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Yes, okay. Gives me great pleasure to... Division of Solid Waste Management and Environmental Health recently completed our fourth annual coloring contest for grades three through five. Students had to design a hope to show recycling at their school. And the entries were judged by the 7-11 jersey at U.S.A. The first and second place winners for the coloring contest will receive a selection of environmental books. Okay. We have the first, second place is Ananya Pradhman, Irwin Elementary, East Pondrick, grade five. Okay, first place is Shalee Rosario, McDivitt School, Olbridge, grade five. Our essay contest, the division also just finished our fifth annual environmental essay contest. Students from grades six to eight were asked to respond to the following questions. Each day trash is thrown on the ground instead of being properly disposed of. This litter makes a mess on the environment and ends up in part beaches in the ocean where it can harm wildlife. How can we prevent people from littering? And that sixth grade, third place is Shivali Boras, St. Helena School in Edison. Okay, the second place is Varun, I don't want to ruin this name here, but we're going to try it again, Varun Vaityanak. Seventh grade, second place, Anndhia Sharma, St. Matthew's School, Edison. Eighth grade, second place, Mohammedu Sumare.
Sumare.
Sumare?
Sumare.
Grade?
Now you've got to marry your best buddy.
He's going in college. I don't think you're going to want to stay here to be bored by us. You're welcome to take, we could take a one-minute recess if you all want to leave that you don't want to stick here for the rest of the meeting.
Thank you very much.
Each freeholder has been provided with a list of correspondence received by the clerk's office since our last meeting. This correspondence will be kept on file of the office of the clerk of the board for reference.
Is there a motion to accept the correspondence?
Motion to accept.
Second. Motion by Freeholder Tamaro, second by Freeholder Armwood. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes for approval.
Board of Chosen Freeholders, regular meeting, May 19th, 2016, 7:00 PM.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve by Freeholder Tamaro, second by Freeholder Armwood. Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Bellante?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny? Freeholder Tamaro?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes. And for your freeholders, Freeholder Ken Armwood.
Thank you, Freeholder Director. Office of Culture and Heritage, Middlesex County History Day, East Jersey Old Town Village, 1050 River Road, Piscataway, Sunday, June 5th, from 10:00 AM until 4:00 PM, rain or shine. History Day is a free, site-wide, open house featuring family fun activities for all ages and vintage children's games and crafts. Experience historic craft demonstrations, carriage rides through the park, vintage children's games and crafts, 18th century music, along with discovering the history of your town in our history tent with over 25 historical societies and groups featuring exhibits and displays. On the business front, I'd like to say that I'm happy to see the end of the Verizon strike, happy for IBW 827 and the CWA and everyone who works for Verizon, and also today's National Anti-Gun Violence Day. Hence, I'm wearing my orange, the only orange thing that I have is this tie, and I'm wearing it for the, in support of National Anti-Gun Violence Day. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Phil Armwood. Freeholder Deputy Director Kara Bellante.
Thank you, Director. As Freeholder liaison to the Middlesex County Open Space and Recreation Public Advisory Committee, I am happy to bring you up to date on a few open space items. Back in March of this year, my freeholder colleagues and I forwarded the potential acquisition of 13 acres of open space property in Monroe Township to the MCI for due diligence. This property would add to the existing 1,570 acres the county has already preserved through Thompson Park and its conservation area while providing flood plain and stream protection to the Manalapan Brook. Phase one environmental work on the property is already underway, and we expect the return of appraisals by the end of the month. Work continues on the historic Story Farm also in Monroe Township. The Board of Chosen Freeholders has already approved a contract for the purchase of this 106-acre piece of property, and we will continue to work towards closing with the seller. I hope to report on our successful closing early this fall. As we continue through 2016, I look forward to reporting on additional acquisitions through our open space and farmland preservation programs as we continue to work towards improving the quality of life for the residents of Middlesex County. That's my report.
Thank you. Freeholder Charlie Kenny.
Thank you, Director. I just have a couple items. Over the last few weeks, I've had the pleasure of attending a few events on behalf of my freeholder colleagues and with my freeholder colleagues, and I'd just like to mention a couple of them. One is on the agenda for tonight, it's the resolution in honor of Lieutenant Helene Catani, who was honored this past Memorial Day in Olbridge for her service in the military. Helene is a 96-year-old veteran who was at the Battle of the Bulge as a nurse. That was as spry as anybody you want to meet, you would never know that she was 96. And she has gone about her life after returning, raising a family, continuing to fight for our veterans and care for our veterans, as she used to go up to, I believe it was the Passaic Veterans Home, once a week to DuBingo and other events at the Veterans Home. And she was a terrific lady to meet, as I said that day in Olbridge, and I was there on behalf of the Freeholder Board and Helene Flynn, our county clerk. I said that Helene is one of those, we honor football players, we honor baseball players, we think of them as heroes, but Helene is one of those true unsung heroes that goes about their life just leading it the way it should be led, in service to others and giving of herself to our country and our freedom. And she truly is to be commended, and I'm glad that we're able to recognize her at the Olbridge Memorial Day services. A couple of the items that I have is another event that we were at recently, Freeholder Armwood and I, it was Dime Below the Line, which was held here in New Brunswick at, I believe it's Christ Church if I have it correct, Episcopalion Church on Patterson Street. And this was a wonderful program put on by a freshman at the Rutgers School of Social Sciences, Andre Treadwell, if I have her last name correct. And it was basically World Hunger Day, and it was in recognition of World Hunger Day. And it was an educational program on why there is hunger in the world and who it affects the most, and what we can do to help eradicate and get everybody to proper nourishment that they need to have. And it was also a dinner that was made up of items that you would find at the food pantry. And so, the food was delicious, it was in cooperation with the chef or the head of food services from Rutgers and some people that run the food pantry here in New Brunswick. And the program was fantastic because you don't realize how hunger and malnourishment affects our young, our working families, and our seniors. There's a high population of seniors that have to choose between paying for medicine and paying for food. And so, the program that they're really pushing is working from the bottom up. In other words, not making it dependent upon food pantries and people donating so there's enough food for people to have, it's about giving the people the tools at the bottom and making it so that they can sustain for themselves and be sustainable. So it was a fantastic program, I was glad that I was able to attend, and Andre deserves a lot of credit, and the church also for hosting the event. And the last item I have is just tonight in Edison Township, the Woodbridge Town Council, Greg Ficarra, Councilman Ficarra, and part of his mayor's health program is having his annual Walk the Greenway, which is on the Middlesex County Greenway, which Freeholder Tamaro and I know Freeholder Delina have worked on, as the rest of the Freeholder Board through the years. It's just to make people aware of the Greenway, show them what's out there, and let them get out and experience it. And that's all I have, Director. Thank you.
Thank you, Freeholder Kenny. Freeholder Charlie Tamaro.
Thank you, Director, and boy, I've got a lot of exciting news this evening. Thirteen days and counting until we launch another season for Plays in the Park at the Stephen Cabestro Theater in Roosevelt Park. We kick off this season on June 15th at 8:30 with Disney's The Little Mermaid. This promises to be a great show for kids and adults alike. And don't forget, we have two shows that start at 7:30, they're on June 20th, Monday June 20th, and Tuesday, June 21st. And those shows are so the little children come and not fall asleep during the performance. With Memorial Day still fresh in our minds, I would like to remind everyone that all active servicemen and women and their immediate families can attend any performance in Plays in the Park this summer free of charge by contacting Jackie Neal at Park Office, 732-745-3936. And I also want to thank my freeholder colleagues, because this year, we're going to start something new for our veterans. I'm happy to announce three special performances of South Pacific. This summer, that will honor veterans, a special reserved seating will be available August 1st, which is a Monday, for veterans of WWII and Korean War, August 2nd for veterans of the Vietnam War, and August 3rd, veterans for all other wars and conflicts. So please contact the Parks Office for more information. We thank all our veterans and active men and women in the military for their service in the country. Once again, contact Jackie Neal at 732-745-3936. And finally, don't forget our annual fishing derby at the Roosevelt Park on Saturday, June 18th. Check-in begins at 8:30 with worms in the water starting at 9:00. Three age groups, four to seven, eight to 10, 11 to 14, with prizes for each age group. Register now, the event is free by calling Tracy Reed at 732-745-4448. With summer right around the corner, now is a great time to take advantage of your county parks. And thank you, Director.
Thank you. I only have one announcement that I'd like to make, is next Saturday, June 11th, we will have our annual pancreatic cancer walk, it will be in Roosevelt Park. Registration starts at 8:00. It's a cancer walk, 5K run as well, and it will be held at Roosevelt Park in Edison. 9:00 is kickoff. And all proceeds go to the Cancer Institute in New Jersey for research to find a cure for pancreatic cancer. Okay, Mr. Kelso, any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be held?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be voided?
There are none.
This time, I'd like to open a meeting to the public on any resolutions listed. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Charles Cradwell. I'm from New Brunswick, and I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today. I have a few questions for you. The first is about 868. Can you tell me what is happening? Is this a proximity meter? Can you tell me what that is and why?
Yes, it's basically to enhance the security in that area with the new door and the proximity card, so it's for security purposes that we're putting that in.
Sounds like a car entry system. 879, is there a time line? Is there a bidding?
Well, I know that depending on how quickly the bids come in and they're awarded, the expectation is that demolition would start by the end of the summer. I do believe that the period is somewhat lengthy, probably close to six months because of the complexity of the building itself, but I would expect that it would be done by the end, hopefully by the end of the year, beginning of next year.
Thank you. 895, before there's guarantees, can you tell me what that is all about?
Well, all performance guarantees are for the same thing. Whenever there is a site plan approval that affects county facilities, mainly county roads, and whenever there's work that's going to take place in the road or public right-of-way, the estimate for that work is identified by the county engineering department, and they must, any person who's doing that has to post a guarantee to make sure that the work gets done properly.
Do you know what this project is?
I'm not sure what is specifically, Rich, I don't know if you...
I think it was a bunch of sidewalks.
Sidewalk.
Can you tell me about the condemnation proceedings in Olbridge? What is involved, where it was planned for the site?
There is a series of them located on this agenda. What is involved in a developers agreement is whenever there is a development that's approved by the local municipality planning board, and it affects county facilities, the county planning board identifies those facilities, and a developers agreement is entered into whereby the developer is obligated to acquire any properties that are necessary to do those facilities and pay for the improvements. The agreement also provides routinely that if the developer is unable to acquire those properties privately, the county will do condemnation to acquire those properties because they are for public improvements and public right-of-way, like traffic signalization, sidewalks, and so forth, road widening. All of those costs associated with the acquisition and the costs associated with fees and appraisals and so forth is paid for by the developer. I don't recall specifically who the developer is in this case, but the project is referred to as Woodhaven.
Thank you. There are answers. 925, with CO revenue contracts, is New Brunswick beginning, where those are kind of the CO revenue?
That's been a standard, that we get casino revenue for transportation, we use it sometimes to our MCAT as well.
And it's basically just closing out the budget here.
Okay, but it's no change to continuing?
No.
And then, the last one I would ask about, I don't see the logic for keeping secret the identities of the people who attended this leadership training.
What item are you talking about?
945.
945?
This event already happened, so I don't understand why it's a secret which two sergeants and which five investigators.
It's for the security that the prosecutor feels is necessary for the security of the investigators or the two sergeants that are the investigators and five investigators, I'm sorry.
Respectfully, the event already happened, so what is the security risk if their identities are revealed, that they attended an event on May 26th in New Brunswick? Why is that a secret?
What matters is the prosecutor's position as the individuals and what individuals are being trained and for in any particular discipline is what is intended to be confidential, not when it occurred and when they were there, but what they were being trained for.
Okay, so the New Jersey Department of Law enforcement annual leadership training conference, that is top secret. Who has gotten that leadership training?
You can direct your question to the prosecutor's office if you wish. We are honoring what the prosecutor wishes to remain confidential and is not particular to Middlesex County.
That's time.
It's common throughout the state.
Respectfully.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public that would like to speak on any resolutions listed?
I move to close the public portion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Tamaro, second by Freeholder Bellante. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Kelso.
I believe we have one resolution to exclude.
Yes, 16-866R.
And I believe...
866.
866, yes.
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Kelso.
Yes, Freeholder Director, a motion would then be in order to adopt the consent agenda consisting of Resolution Number 16-859 through Resolution 16-947, excluding Resolution 16-866 to be voted upon separately.
Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Tamaro, seconded by Freeholder Bellante. Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Bellante?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny?
Yes.
Freeholder Tamaro?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes.
And now, Freeholder Director, would be appropriate to consider Resolution 16-866, which was excluded by Freeholder Tamaro.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Armwood, seconded by Freeholder Bellante. Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Bellante?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny?
Yes.
Freeholder Tamaro?
Present, not voting.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes. Okay, this time, I'd like to open a meeting up to public on any questions you may have. State your name, address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening once again, Freeholders. My name is Charles Cradwell from New Brunswick, I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today. I'd like to ask first, when was the last time the county did testing of the water in its facilities? Drinking water?
Drinking water, we have water bottles that we have.
I just took a sip out of the fountain over there. Did you test the water in this building?
Les?
We haven't tested the water here, the public supply.
Well, in light of what a lot of school districts have found recently, I would suggest that the county immediately begin doing proactive annual monitoring, to actually test the water in this building and in the courthouse, I see some pretty gross-looking faucets in the courthouse, and any other building that the county has where people might be drinking the water. You know, I imagine there's probably a dozen that the county has. Are you telling me that none of them have ever tested the quality of drinking water for contamination?
It's public water supply, and this building was built, I believe, in the early 90s, okay? So, at that time, it's not quite being used, it's in copper piping, so it seems wouldn't have any reason to test in this particular building. Public supply is tested on a regular basis through the water purveyor.
Okay, that's not a good way to look at it. New Brunswick just built a school, a Red Shaw School. They tested positive for it in that school. So don't tell me, because this building is, you know, built 15 or 20 years ago, that you don't have to ever test the water. There's more than just lead that can contaminate water, there's actually a ton of different things. You ought to be testing, at the very least, for lead and copper contamination. This is, you know, 101, this is very basic stuff, the governor's about to mandate that school districts do it. I don't see why the county can't do it if the school districts are doing it. Do it before people get hurt, you know, do it. Is this something you're open to? Are you willing to look into this?
We will take your comments and consider them.
Thank you, thank you. I encourage you to have regular testing.
Thank you for your comments.
I wanted to ask, is there parking for the public to attend these meetings available?
Is there parking for the public, is public parking in the street? There's parking lots in the city of New Brunswick.
Okay, is there any free parking, or do people have to pay for parking to attend these meetings?
You have to, I guess, would have to talk to the city of New Brunswick on that.
You have to, I guess, would have to talk to the city of New Brunswick on that.
Why, I mean, don't you want people to come to your meetings?
These are public meetings that are posted, that everyone has an opportunity to come to. They're well advertised, that everyone has the opportunity to come. If they choose to come, there's parking available on the street.
And do you pay for parking? Do you park on the street?
Do I park on the street? No, I have parking provided by the county.
Okay, and where is that parked?
In the garage.
Okay, I don't understand why you get free parking, but the public can't get free parking.
I'm an employee of the county.
All the city meetings, they provide the lot in the rear of City Hall, and I don't see why you can't get the city to do that for your meetings. If you, I mean, it's an obstacle for people to charge for parking. This is a community that's exploited in many ways, and one of the big ways that they're exploited is by having egregious parking rates. And the meters all along here are not free until after eight P.M. So you're holding a meeting at seven P.M., the public meeting at six P.M. Why can't you make arrangements with the lot behind City Hall to provide free parking to the public?
I could ask the mayor and see if he would be open to the idea, but that's a city decision of New Brunswick to make.
Would you please do that?
Sure.
Thank you. I want to ask, how did things turn out with the feral parking garage situation, the remediation?
The feral remediation?
Yes, sir.
It's actually in progress, because as I mentioned to you previously, it has to happen in stages, because there has to be a certain amount of demolition to accomplish before it can continue. I know the surface lot has been investigated, and a report, as required by the state, has been submitted to the state for review. It's not a remediation, it's the investigation.
That's time.
It's time.
Time.
Anyone else in the public that have any comments or questions? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, I'm Gethys from Twenty-Six, Gantucket, Longtown Township. Let me start by saying this is not, I'm not a TNR person, I'm a Golden Person, I keep getting Golden Cats.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm here regarding eight feral cats that are living in Thompson Park in Longtown Township. They have been there, to my knowledge, since before November. We've attempted to contact the freeholders to try and resolve the situation to get the cats TNR, which is trapped and then released. We haven't been able to contact anybody or receive any return phone calls, and I think it's pretty good for six hundred seventy-five acres, we only have two feral colonies and only eight cats. Last week, the situation got escalated, because I was informed there was a white substance around a tree next to one of the colonies. And I contacted Hazmat, Hazmat sent down the call later. Nevertheless, it ended up Hazmat came out, they tested it, they told me it looked like cremation ashes, possibly from a doll or an animal. And when I questioned what, you know, what the white crystals were, they said it looked like it could have been seashells. So I finally spoke with Bob Myers, who's just, I guess, supervisor of charge of park of maintenance, and he agreed, because these cats have been fed twice a day since November. So they're really not feral, feral, they actually come up to one of the caregivers, if she calls them. They live in the tree line, they stay in the tree line. They don't come out when they see other people out, but they do respond to their caregivers. One feeds the morning, one feeds the night. So with that Hazmat situation, or the, and it was only one tree, one tree on six hundred seventy-five acres that had a white substance. I was suspicious tonight. So I finally received Rick Lear's name, contacted him, spoke with him, and I presented a proposal to him to trap them and release these cats. I went through all kinds of questions and answers with him, he sat with one of the others, and I said, this is a situation we need to probably address immediately, because eight cats can turn into twenty cats if we don't TNR them. We have a vet that's willing to fix them for three of the females, she'll have to go look in. We have experienced trappers that are on standby waiting for permission, they carry property, so we cannot remove them. I prepared folders for you regarding TNR programs such. Right before I came, Ryan Hackett from Main Society of the U.S. contacted me. He happens to be a county resident, and he's the state director of the HSUS. He couldn't make it because of short notice, and he said there are programs available to the county to assist in adopting these programs, funding, et cetera. So with that being said, I put in the folder local and state statistics, and I think that this might be, cats that are trapped and taken to a shelter are held for seven days at the expense of the tax payer, and they think they are euthanized. And if you all recall, how about a regional animal shelter, when those cats are euthanized, they're euthanized from their heart step, which means they're in the heart and they're dead, very inhumane weight in my opinion to call a cat. Since two thousand and eight, the state of New Jersey has euthanized one hundred sixty-seven thousand, four hundred eighty-two cats, and thirty thousand, five hundred thirty-six of them were from Middlesex County. That's at the expense of the taxpayers, seven days in the shelter, charged for euthanasia, the disposal, et cetera. Since two thousand and eight...
That's five minutes.
Your time is up, ma'am. I will give you a response. You can leave your paperwork or your pamphlets here, but the county is not in a position to TNR. Stray cats are against our policy. We're not, our policy is that you must have a pet leashed. We're not going to get into the business of TNR cats, TNR-ing cats. We can't accept them back, because that would put the county in a liability, that if for some reason an animal attacks someone that's a visitor to the park, that would put us in a bad situation. So that's our position at this point, that I would say.
You already have animals in the park.
We don't condone it, we don't support it, we don't authorize it.
So in other words, you're just totally dead set against TNR?
We're not in the position to TNR cats.
We're not, this is all...
I'm sorry, ma'am, but your time is up. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the public that would like to speak? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Francie Morales, Jamesburg, New Jersey. I am one of the caregivers to these cats, and unfortunately, I've been doing it for ages.
You feed the cats?
Yes.
You're not supposed to feed the cats. It's our policy that you cannot feed cats or any animals.
Okay. I'm here to tell you that I have been doing it as far as eating them, and also going shelters every single day, through smell, lizards, rain, through, I'm sorry, to the point where I've had to walk twelve o'clock at night in the morning, just because, it's all according to who's working in the county, I'm sorry, in the park itself, ninety-nine percent of the jobs, turning our heads, whatever, there was always that one or two that we couldn't do it, but, okay. There is only, I understand, as far as what you have said, but now we're told that I can only go trap them and take them out there, or I'm going to get issues there. I've asked as far as today, if I can't continue to feed them, can we trap them and take them out? No, because now they're considered park property. So my question is, is what are these cats just going to die?
Rick, can you...
If we had been a park office, I mean, certainly working out a creation where we could work with you to trap the animals anyway, get them out to the, you know, to the proper care, but not turn them to the park, but something that we're going to work with groups in order to make happen, get them to a place where they can get the care that they need, and therefore want to be adopted by a family, or want them, that's something we're willing to work out, because that's everybody's message, it's the message of our patrons, of our staff, as well as the animals themselves. Ultimately, we want to go ahead and do the most to do anything possible, and part of the community that we can work together to help facilitate that, that, as the director said, the cats cannot be returned as a colony to Thompson Park.
So I'd be okay to go trap them myself?
I can.
No, no, no.
I don't want to say that, and what I want to say is that we can work together, you know, track back those meetings, we can just touch base and figure out, like, what would be the corporate plan in a way that we can find the right qualified individuals to be able to do this, so that nobody gets hurt, and sustains any injuries out of the park caretaker workshop of the cats themselves. So I think there's cooperative opportunity here to go ahead and try and work together to do the right thing, hope we didn't want to clear that returning the cats to Thompson Park as a colony itself is not an option, again, in the right care, the adoption of the cats.
Anyone else in the public that would like to speak? Yes, sir?
Agent Fiedler from the New Jersey SPCA. I'd just like to add on to that, I understand the TNR policy of the county and the Parks Department, and that compromise would work out if that could actually be instituted throughout the county. Opposition is, we don't want the animals to die. I'm the lead investigator on this particular case, and for them to be able to trap animals with Parks Department permission and county permission would benefit everybody. You don't need eight cats having more cats, and then you wind up with, you know, two or three hundred cats at one shot. If they can trap them, we figure out what to do with them after, that would be in the best interest of the county and the best interest of the cats themselves.
Well, I think we could possibly work out a solution as far as trapping them, and like Rick Lear mentioned, that we can get them off to a safe place where possibly somebody could adopt them, but we certainly can't accept them back.
Oh, no, I fully understand that, and I explained that to them, that, you know, if they can get permission to trap them, they can stay in neutral, but they cannot release them. I know the Parks Department and the county policy, but, you know, again, under the title for law, we're trying to do the best interest of the cats and not have a problem where people go in there and poison them or anything else, and when they're poisoning one particular animal, they could be poisoning another, you know, we haven't determined what that is, and I want, you know, for the benefit of everyone, humans and animals, it would be best if they could just trap them, get them out of there, and then walk.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public that would like to speak?
I will.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Donna Wildrith, I live in Cranmore, New Jersey. I just wanted to say, I found this really very confusing, because my understanding was that those cats have been there for years, as much as ten years, am I right about that? Eight years. So obviously, they haven't proved the significant health or any other kind of threat to the public. Trapping them, vaccinating them, return is sound public policy, it saves the taxpayers' money, it protects public health by having the cats vaccinated, something that isn't happening. The pursuit that this county has been taking of trapping and remove, which we all know is trap and kill, that's what happens to these cats, because these really aren't candidates for adoption, is wasting the taxpayers' money, it's not working, and there are population explosions going on all over New Brunswick, North Brunswick, every town in this county. So I would really ask that the freeholders invite some of us in to talk to you about other possibilities that might work. I've been doing TNR for close to ten years now. I'm a community cat program coordinator for a local animal rescue organization. When we have helped people trap the few cats that are in their backyard, there were no more cats. If you let it go, in a year, there was an explosion like you won't believe. It's very nice that people be allowed to come in and at least remove these cats, and hopefully that would save their lives, but you should know that relocation for feral cats is very difficult. They're very attached to place, often it doesn't work out, and they die trying to get back to the spot where they live. So relocation is not really an ideal answer. And thank you for your time, but one thing I have to say, this county, the feral cat policy pursued by this company is a moral and ethical failure that we all have to look at. Too many cats are being killed that don't have to be killed. Cats that are healthy and thriving in the community can be left there with proper care as long as they're fixed. And finally, the county has to prove to the terms of the fact that we have no shelter in Southern Middlesex County. There is no place for these animals to go, where they can be safe, where they can be repopulated, where they can be sterilized and released as they do at St. Hubert's and other shelters in the state. So I hope we can open a dialogue about that, and find a way to do better by these animals and by these creatures that we know feel, and we feel fear, we love, and we feel so many things, and we're not doing right by them. Okay?
Please state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Teresa Tarrell, and I live in Jamesburg, New Jersey. Do you need my actual address?
Street address?
Maybe I have a few circles in Jamesburg. First of all, I want to say, I want to clarify that these cats are feral, okay? Feral cats can often become familiar with their caregivers and will come to their caregivers. But I assure you, if you, or I, or anyone in this audience went out to near those cats, they would not come near you. They're feral. They are not animals that if we collect and bring to a shelter will ever be adoptable into a home. That is why people advocate for TNR. The difference between wild animals like raccoons and possums and squirrels, are they animals that were always born outside and meant to be outside? These cats are domestic cats that were property of human beings that were displaced by humans. So they're ultimately responsible, irresponsible for them, because someone else in our society has displaced them and put them out. They were not wild animals. They were meant to be, they're domestic animals, they were meant to be in homes, and they're now living outside, and they're trying to survive the best they can. TNR works because it reduces the population. Cats that live outside may only live five to twelve years, but they will live healthy because they're vaccinated, they won't reproduce, and they will live a natural life. It will be good for them, because they won't be in a cage in a shelter, they won't be euthanized because there's nothing wrong with them, and they won't be, you know, they're basically living the life that they've been handed. Whether they were put out, or they were the offspring of cats that were put out, they were put out by people. You mentioned that the county can't be responsible for TNR, but we're not asking the freeholders or the county to be responsible. There are groups here that provide TNR services for the public to help keep these numbers down, and guilds groups are willing to come in and do that. And I'm really glad to hear that you are willing to work out a situation. I would really be grateful if the freeholders could assure the public that they're not going to do any harm to the cats at this point in time until the public and the people that want to help and you can able, are able to sit down together and work something out that's in the best interest. Some people have said there might be other places to relocate the cats. It's not the best option, because cats do try and go back to their homes. But I really want to know that, it seems to me like maybe there was some intention to harm these animals, and I'd like to know that the freeholders, and I think the general public would like to know, that you're not interested in... know that you're not interested in harming any animal, uh, you care for animals in your parks, in your park zoos, in Johnson Park and in Thompson Park. And finally, I have five different documents from a national organization, one is on the vacuum effect, if catch and kill doesn't work, uh, because when you take animals from a site, other animals will move in, if, if, if there's natural habitat there for that to live. Feral cats and the public have a healthy relationship together, uh, scientific studies on trapping and return and how they work, and a list of, um, places that freeholders should get additional information, uh, from other organizations on the effectiveness. It's not only about the Thompson Park cats, this is a, a county, if you have a lot of towns, and we have a lot of cat problems. I'm also a tracker, I help general public people get the cats around their neighborhoods fixed so they're not reproducing and causing more and more animals. They're also, once they're trapped and taken to get span or neutered, they're vaccinated from rabies and dyspeia and three or four other diseases, and they're also ear tipped so that people know that they've been fixed and they've been, uh, vaccinated. Okay, thank you very much.
I could let you know that we would not condone or be part of harming a cat.
Thanks.
Anyone else that would like to speak? Motion to close by Freeholder Kenny, is her second?
Second.
Second by Freeholder Tamara, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, there are motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion to close by Freeholder Tamara, seconded by Freeholder Kenny, roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Balante?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny?
Yes.
Freeholder Tamara?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Reyes?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.